Six oh three P M. Roll call, please Brenda.
Commissioner Hart?
President.
Commissioner Dowling?
Here.
Commissioner Dowling?
Here.
Commissioner Norwood?
Here.
Commissioner Sherman?
Here.
Vice Chairman Woskin absent and Chairman Williams.
Sure. Thank you. Three things before we get to the next item. One, Mr. Dowling has volunteered to do our motions tonight as our vice chairman is going to be out of town this month and next. Secondly, received very sad and bad news tonight coming to the meeting that Baron John, our fearless leader, will be leaving the city shortly and we want to wish her well. And it's been a pleasure working with her over her tenure and she's done some really good things, I think, with this department and making it a much more professional type organization. So with that, and also apparently we have a little bit of a, also another glitch. Apparently the posting, all the posting wasn't done as required by the open meeting laws of our state, which we just had a session the other night, which we learned about and...
It was posted online, it just wasn't physically posted.
He just wanted to repost it, yeah.
Correct. Any action tonight will be ratified at the next meeting.
Yeah.
We'll work for the city attorney to get that done.
Okay. Okay. So we will go ahead and proceed with the meeting and we'll ratify the actions of tonight's meeting. It will take a few minutes at our next meeting to make sure that we're all, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Okay.
Okay. Now, next item, approval of the minutes of the August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting. Do I hear any additions, deletions, or amendments? If not, Commissioner Dowling, I hear a motion.
I would move that we approve the minutes from the August nineteenth, twenty nineteen regular meeting. Or, sorry. The, yeah.
Yes, August nineteenth. Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Dow, seconds the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Call to the public is next item. I don't have any notes. Phil, you're not going to sign up tonight? Okay. So this is where we normally have where the public can address us with any item. We can't take any action, but we'll move on. Old business. We have none tonight on that. So our first new business is CUP nineteen zero zero three, revocation of the conditional use permit for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. James?
Thank you, Chairman Williams. As you recall, this was a conditional use permit that was granted by the planning commission at the June seventeenth meeting. Subsequent to that, there's been a little activity going on. An appeal was filed on the property. The applicant then chose to withdraw the application for that location. So no public hearing was held with counsel on the appeal. Since commission did approve the conditional use permit, we now have a conditional use permit sitting out there on this property, which they are not going to be pursuing. So the action before you tonight would be to revoke that conditional use permit so that it is not sitting out there attached to that property. So that's, all that this is, is basically a formality, paperwork to get rid of that conditional use permit that is sitting out there.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions, Jim, on this item?
Nope.
Is anybody here to address that issue other than you?
Just myself.
All right, that's fine. That's fine.
Did talk with the applicant and she was not...
Just don't want to overlook anybody. Make sure we're okay. All right. Now I'll close the floor. Comments, Commissioner Hart?
No comments.
Anybody have any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Commissioner Dowling, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to revoke conditional use permit nineteen dash zero zero three.
Do I have a second to the...
Second.
Commissioner Hart, seconds that motion. Brenda, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dow?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Woskin? I'm sorry. Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
And Chairman Williams?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Our next item is design review, DR nineteen zero one oh, Anytime Fitness, our new five thousand square foot fitness center. Okay, James?
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is design review application, DR nineteen zero one zero for Anytime Fitness. The location is on the southwest corner of Main and Cherry It's in a C two commercial zoning district. It would be one single story, a five thousand square foot building, which would be used as a fitness center. Currently, there is a shared ingress egress with the Dollar General store, which is on the south side of this property. So this site would be accessed in one area from Main Street, which would access Dollar General on one side and Anytime Fitness on the other. Then also, that easement goes around to Cherry Street. So both of these businesses could be accessed from that existing easement for those two locations. Anytime Fitness also has, there is a through drive on their own property that goes from Cherry to the internal parking area. Parking is calculated at one space per four hundred square feet of usable floor area. So that would, based on the five thousand square feet and deducting out some of the accessory uses, they would be required to have twelve spaces plus one for every two employees. That's sometimes a hard figure to calculate. However, since they are providing forty parking spaces overall, they are, do exceed the minimum code requirements. Two bicycle parking spaces are required based on our code and there are bicycle places shown on the site plan near the front entrance to the facility. Currently, there is an existing monument sign that's located on, up close to the corner to the intersection. It identifies properties down Cherry Street. Those, that off-site signage was approved and there is a small easement there. Any new signage that comes from Anytime Fitness would have to address that existing easement and the sign that is located in that, in that place. So we'd be looking at that when they come and submit their sign application to make sure that that sign, along with any new signage, does not exceed what would be allowed on that site. That little sign that I was just talking about is this little spot right there, which is proposed in their application to be removed with a new sign here. That would all be, like I said, looked at and reviewed as part of the sign plan. The easement that I was talking about coming off of Main Street and heads up to Cherry. Then there is the internal driveway through this, through the center portion of the site. Little bicycle parking spaces, rack is right there. There's a bike parking rack. Sorry to make you keep going back and forth there. Tennis match. The landscape plan that they submitted does meet all the quantity and size and type of plant materials up along Main Street, the cluster of trees, and then coming around Cherry and then to the rear of the site and internal. And that does meet, their landscape plan did meet all the code requirements. This is a subject site, looking at it from Main Street. Sort of there's a bus stop right in, in front of where the building would be located. And this is from the rear of the property, looking back out towards Main Street. This elevation is what would be seen from Cherry Street as you were driving on Cherry. And this is what would be seen from the Dollar General side of the site. This would be the elevation from Main Street. And this would be the main elevation that you would see from the parking area when you're headed towards the building. The color samples that they have used basically is earth tones with a rock cultured stone elevation along the lower portion of the building. Some of the properties in the neighborhood, this is the D E S building to the north and there's a small little office retail complex also on the north side. That's Cherry Street that is right running along there. Dollar General to the south. Looking across Main Street, automotive and office uses. And then to the rear is automotive repair. Looking north on Main Street and south on Main Street and west on Cherry Street. So that is all I have to say regarding the project. There is an applicant from Andrews Design Group who is the applicant for Anytime Fitness. Should you have any questions of them?
All right. First of all, any technical questions, commissioners, Commissioner Hart?
No.
Mr. Dow?
No, sir.
Mr. Dowling?
Not here.
Yeah, I have one question, Jim. Just out of curiosity only. In a situation like this, would the applicant have had the opportunity to place the building more to the west? I like the way it is and I like the frontage, you know, facing Main Street, but just out of curiosity, could they have come in with a plan that would have moved the building more to the western side of the, of the prop? Would it, would it have been their choice?
Yes, it would have been their choice. You know, as it is, there's a twenty-foot setback along both Main and Cherry. So as long as they stayed within their
Right.
building envelope and met their parking landscaping requirements, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Sherman?
No questions.
With regard to that point, I think historically, we've encouraged developments to be up front with the parking in the back. And we don't, we would like to, you know, where it's possible to have parking more out of sight off the Main Street. And so this, this really meets that criteria, would seem like, yes.
And the elevation that you would be seeing from, that would be what you would see from
Right.
Main Street.
Right.
So it's not just a wall with all the electrical equipment.
Right. Okay.
Just a curiosity question. Does a setback include from easements? I'm just curious. If you have that easement, you have to go twenty feet off the easement or just twenty feet from the property line?
From the property line.
Okay. Just curious.
No, that's fine. Good question. Would the applicant have anything to add for us or you can...
Carly can't.
Carly, would you like to address us for a minute?
Um...
Or would you come up to and sit down with Jim? We're recording this. It's also being televised. So if you would, and we pardon the inconvenience of not having the microphone there. I think the city council stole it the other night for their meeting. Yeah, would you just give us your name, please?
My name is Carly. I'm with Andrews Design Group. We're the architects for this building. Jim summed up the majority of it very nicely. I just want to add that, you know, it is an existing empty lot and the, we're just trying to bring more jobs, more activity to this, this corner. We try to use the, the surrounding buildings, there's not really a strong visual cohesion amongst them. So we try to stay fairly neutral and, and keep with nice materials and colors that'll add positive vibes to the corner.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hart, any questions of the applicant?
Questions? No.
Yes. Any questions?
No.
Questions to the applicants? Questions on the plans?
No questions.
No, I, I did a very good job, very complete job on the plans and we appreciate that always. And so, is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak to us on this? I don't think so. Carly, you can be excused. Thank you very much.
Don't we get to say what we think?
Huh?
Yeah, after she says that?
Oh, okay.
All right. With that, I'm going to close the floor to the public. Commissioner Hart, your comments and thoughts are...
I really liked the effort by the architect for breaking up the mass with the colors. I think they did a really nice job. Particularly liked the landscaping that you, you put around the site. That's going to break up the mass into the building also. I think they did a pretty nice job.
Okay. Commissioner Dow?
No, sir.
Commissioner Dowling?
It looks like it's consistent with everything we're looking for in that spot.
Right. Commissioner...
Yeah, very nice job. Good luck with it. Appreciate you're here.
I think it's a great project. It really will improve that corner and, yeah.
Yeah, it was exciting. This is the second project, infill project we have on Main Street in that general area, which is very nice.
Almost correct.
Yeah, very, yeah. It should be a good use to that particular site and appears to be very well designed. With that, Commissioner Dowling, will you give us a motion, please?
Sure. I move to approve design review nineteen dash zero one zero, subject to the following stipulations. That the project is developed in conformance with the development plans as approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission at the September sixteenth, twenty nineteen meeting. That the project conforms to the Code Review Board comments dated July first, twenty nineteen. That the project complies with all building engineering and fire department requirements. That identifies a minimum of two bicycle parking spaces. A certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of conditions shall be issued within twenty-four months of the planning commission action.
That's...
And any other stipulations of the planning and zoning deemed, deemed necessary by the planning and zoning commission.
Which we aren't. Do I have a second to that motion?
Before we second it?
Yes.
I heard you say July first for bullet point number two.
July thirty-first. I mumbled.
That's okay.
Bullet point two, July thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart, seconds the motion. Real quickly, Carly, you've read the stipulations and there's no problem?
No.
Okay, good. I didn't think so. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dow?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Good luck. Look forward to it. All right. Our next item of business is Z O nineteen zero zero five, amendment to section four oh six dot C dot two D, parking and loading requirements. And we're looking in consideration of alternative surfacing op, options and requirements for off-street parking areas, accessways and driveways. You on, James, or Scott?
I'll take this one.
You're going to take this one. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission. This is a zoning ordinance tax amendment request to allow alternative surfacing options. Right now, the only options you can do for any of these accessways, parking areas and driveways is asphalt or chip seal. Chip seal is only available in limited circumstances if limited conditions are met. So it adds on that expense of doing asphalt. Staff worked with the fire department and the engineer to develop some guidelines on allowing alternative surfacing that can be proposed by an applicant. And the engineer will review it for requirements, make sure it will hold up to wear and tear, that it can be marked safely and visibly and not deteriorate significantly over time. Basically, that it can be treated like it would be if it was on asphalt. It's dust-free. There's no drainage issues with it. To give applicants and developers differing options on what they can, can bring in. There's, there's places in town where something like this would benefit. Places like the fairgrounds, Blazing M Ranch, where they have that character that you don't want to bring in just full asphalt and full chip seal across their entire property. It just doesn't make sense to do that.
And this would be basically up to the city engineer to...
Right. The applicant would work with the engineer to determine the specifications of what they propose and make sure it's going to work.
And what power do we have over, in the design review capacity to review that and approve it for any specific project? Do we, are we giving up that, basically, if it's approved by the city engineer?
Right now, the only power you would have is, is to allow chip seal
Right.
certain instances that it may not be allowed. So really, it's not changing anything other than, it is not taking away any of the power that you would have.
Okay. But if we be in code as a potential law, if we, if we have just, for some reason, just unknown, would object to that, I don't think that was right for that particular property.
Right. And it'll be...
We could, we could have some say-so in that.
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Norwood?
It seems like, I don't know about this. I mean, it, it, it doesn't address any positives which could be used as alternatives and it doesn't address any negatives. And it doesn't really address when and where it could be used. So what I understand from this is that we, I would be approving something anywhere in town that an alternative paving could come in. Somebody could say, I want to put down wooden boards because I can't afford chip seal or I can't afford blacktop. I understand you could use pavers, that would look nice. But it just seems like it's too broad. It's, to me, it...
Cost isn't, cost of, the cost to the applicant is not a factor that would be determined on doing the alternative surface.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding then. What's determining what here? Somebody comes in and they want an alternative, hey, let's say this young lady's project. They could come in and say, well, we don't want to use...
The use, the character.
I'm sorry?
The use, the character of the surrounding area, the overall impact of the site, those sort of different site-specific items that you have that, for example, the, the fairgrounds. If they came in to expand, they, they wanted to expand some of their RV areas. If they came in to do that, they'd be required to hard-surface the entire site, which is not necessary. And so this allows them, working with the city engineer, to provide an alternative that could eliminate them needing to do that hard-surface for, for no reason. It's not going to benefit drainage. It's not going to benefit the aesthetics. It's not going to benefit the use.
I under, I understand with the fairgrounds, but I was thinking more along the lines of developing property which is similar that, that we just approved. Is that an example? Is that a good or a bad example of where someone could come in and want to use, not use chip seal or not use blacktop or not use concrete or not use pavers? Could somebody come in in a situation like that?
They could. They could. Any, anybody would be able to come in and ask, depending on what their project is, where their project is, and if it meets the requirements, how it fits in. And, and all of those factors would be used to determine if it's reasonable or if they need to follow the asphalt.
In this example then, Scott, is there specific requirements for the piece of property that we just approved? That's where I'm trying to get at.
I don't know that I understand your question.
Well, they have a parking lot.
Right.
Okay. If they wanted to use an alternative surface that wasn't concrete, that wasn't chip seal, that wasn't asphalt, could, could that have been possible for this?
I can't say one way or another because we don't have this ordinance in effect. And it would be working with the city engineer to see what they would provide to determine that. So I can't answer based on, I can't answer based on this project here because it's not a factor in, in this right now.
I'm not trying to ask a trick question, but what I'm trying to get to is, it seems like it's pretty broad in that you have really no control over any other alternative other than the fact that it needs to hold striping for parking places.
Well, there, there are parameters in here. It needs to meet engineering requirements. It needs to meet safety requirements, fire department requirements.
We'd also have to prove the design. We'd also have to approve the design. Personally, I would not?
Site design is approved for?
I wouldn't approve this particular project we just approved with that kind of, but maybe if something came in from the fairgrounds, I would want, it gives us some more flexibility in what we're looking at in their certain circumstances. They'd be pretty limited, it seemed to me. And most projects, we definitely, you know, would set the tone there that we wouldn't want to necessarily approve.
So we're not really giving up anything on?
No, it's adding some flexibility, I think, is what?
It adds, it adds another alternative for a project that it just, asphalt may be too much for.
Right. It sort of goes along, I think, personally, with our sidewalk issue in some particular projects we've looked at, said, that doesn't make a lot of sense, but that's what's in the code and whatever, and this would give us some flexibility if we wanted to use it. If we don't want to use it, that's up to the commission to?
Yeah, I was just trying to think of what the other alternatives would be, other than the ones that everybody's using, like chip seal, or blacktop, or concrete, or pavers. What would have been the other alternatives that we're letting them have?
And that's ever-changing, there's so many different new items that come up.
Our city manager is here, Mr. Corbin.
We can have Robert come up and kind of explain what he has on that end.
Robert, you're on the hot seat.
City Engineer Robert Winnicky. I guess to answer your question at this point, right now, asphalt, chip seal, concrete, pavers, those are kind of what's allowed. Some of the alternate options for this would be something that would be impervious, or not impervious, pervious, to actually reduce the runoff that we have from the site. So some of the other developments that have talked about some things are like a GeoGrid-type cell that you put on the surface, and it has a rock or gravel, decomposed granite or something that goes into it. So that way, it's stable, it can handle the fire truck loading, and also turning and everything else, but it would allow for that water, instead of it all running off in one primary deluge, it would actually come down, pervy, get into that surface, infiltrate the ground, and actually help with some of the runoff conditions. So we're looking at some of those types of items. So that answer your question at this point, Commission?
It's another alternative.
Yeah, it's, we're trying to at least allow some other alternatives.
Just kind of curious as to what other alternatives are, and they're not mentioned, so?
Right.
And I think this is something that there's so, there's a possibility of so many different options, that it's an ever-evolving thing, that I don't know that we could put specific items in there and make it to where we're not changing it every year, every other year.
Yeah, I think, like Scott said, the technology is kind of emerging and changing right now, so what you think of today may not exist, or it exists, but it's been improved upon three months later. So we're trying not to limit what can be kind of thought of here at this point. I mean, you could, if you wanted to stick with concrete and asphalt, there's previous versions of both of those. However, you know, those can be clogged by the amount of silt that gets onto them, and then it becomes a maintenance issue for the property owners. So we're trying to look at that as something that, when they're proposing these, that they are aware of, yeah, this is a great idea and concept, but you do have that additional maintenance you have to worry about, so.
Okay. There was a direction a couple of years ago on a project from council to look at allowing alternative surfacing for various things.
Right, right.
So ultimately, the town cannot approve something that somebody could recommend if we didn't feel that it was proper. Is that correct?
Say that again.
We could not approve, we could not, the town could not approve, whether it's this board or whether it's engineering department. They have the right to say, no, you really can't use that.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I need.
Commissioner Norwood?
I think what we're saying is, we're just giving the developers options.
Yes.
Make them present and say, we would like to use this, and then we get to decide, okay, what you're saying makes sense, and okay, or no, it doesn't make sense.
Commissioner Dowling?
Yeah, I would say that by the time it's going to get to this point, the client will, fair chance the client will have already consulted with their engineer and their, you know, their design engineer, and they would probably have come up with a justification for what they're using, an explanation of what they're using. And it wouldn't really just be, you know, Jim Bob throwing out there what he thinks he might like. So it'll probably have gone through enough vetting before that, that we'll get it in a situation where it won't be too critical.
Yeah.
And I'd say it is a good idea for that runoff, because we have seen a lot of those where that first, that initial first flush off a piece of property is what usually carries a majority of the debris, the oil, and the contaminants that are going to go into the city sewer systems, or the storm drain systems. So if you can mitigate that first flush, it's always a nice thing to be able to do. And if you have certain, you know, certain visual aspects of the material that will allow you some options as well, that's always nice, instead of having, especially if you consider, if you look at Phoenix, the huge heat bubble down there because it's full of black asphalt and blacktop, which is just a huge magnet for the heat, and then the only reason we actually have a cool-down at night up here is because we don't have as much of that yet. And if we can give an option to use a cooler color, a cooler surface, or something that will reflect more of that heat rather than holding it all night long, that'll help us keep our pleasant overnight temperatures a little bit longer.
Some people like ninety-five degrees at midnight.
There you go, I-17s right there.
Any other thing, Robert, you could?
No, I think?
I think you've pretty well covered. That was a good?
And what Commissioner Dowling said was very accurate, so no, I wouldn't agree with that.
Yeah, it wouldn't get to you guys without support from the engineer, from planning and zoning, and from the fire department. So it would be like Commissioner Dowling said, be vetted before it even got to this point.
And then the engineer who gives it to us has Arizona missions insurance, just in case.
Exactly.
So it's on them.
Our fire chief is here, but I think it's pretty explanatory. You're going to be, has to meet your requirements of being able to, there are trucks to come on-site and not bog down and be able to turn, so that's good. I think we've got that covered, so thank you, Robert.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate it. Anybody from the audience would like to address this issue, or anything? Seeing none, I'll close the floor. Comments before we vote, anybody?
I think it's a really good idea to be able to give the designers options. You know, you've got some development, and maybe you've got some situation where you really want to break up the runoff. You don't want it to run off the property, you want it to go into the soil and break, and so you don't get that big runoff. And I'm sure that, I'm not sure, I'm hoping that the designers will have a good reason and have reasoned that out already by the times they come to us. So I think it's a really good idea.
Commissioner Dowling? Okay. Commissioner Dowling, any further comments?
I covered it myself.
Commissioner Norwood?
Good.
You're good?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
No, they're crushed.
Okay. I think we've covered it real well. Commissioner Dowling, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I'll entertain the idea of doing it. I move to recommend approval of ZO nineteen dash zero zero five to the city council to allow alternative surfacing options.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Dowl seconds the motion. Render roll call, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowl?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye. Unanimated carry. Thank you. We have, that ends the formal business part of the meeting, and again, Carly, you won't have to be coming back. The next meeting will just officially ratify that, our decision tonight, but we don't need you, you know, it just could be a formality to get it done, so we can get it done. A month or so ago, I was asking, when periodically we've all asked the staff of what's going on with a number of projects, we have, we've approved a large number of projects over the last two years, and a lot of them don't seem to be coming out of the ground and whatever is going on. And I realize it takes time to get all the design done and approvals and whatever. So staff has put together a listing of all of our approvals for, under tab six, of our projects that we've approved from August two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen, and the current status of those, to the best of their knowledge. I had, let's see, on the last, next item, next last item, Merkin Vineyards has completed, that zoning? Is that, they haven't constructed any, I guess the zoning's okay?
The zoning has been completed, they still have to come back for design review.
Okay, yeah.
Which it looks like they will be.
Yeah, the project's not completed, of course.
Yes, it's the zoning that was completed, the rezone.
Can I make a comment here, Russ?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it looks like they took the roof off and a lot of, something's been done up there, is that?
Oh, yeah.
They did get a demolition permit up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they want to save just a part of the wall. Originally, that plan was to include that building and sort of make it a centerpiece, which I was sort of, but anyway, they've, they left the walls up, and it'll be incorporated into the project, as I understand it. Any others, anybody have any questions on the? We've just got a lot of stuff ongoing, apparently, just in different, what, phases of?
Yeah, mostly the ongoing ones have been through the approval process, and we're either waiting on them to submit for building permits, or to revise after their plan review, make changes and resubmit for another review. There are, I believe, only a couple of them that are waiting to pick up their permits. Everything has been approved, we're just waiting for them to come in and pick them up. That's what most of those ongoing statuses are.
Right. I noticed the homeless coalition, though you showed was relocated, open for business, they're not relocated.
At that time, yeah, when this was, when this was done, they were still intending on actually relocating, so we have a meeting scheduled with them for Wednesday to look at two new locations.
Okay, they're still, they're still working at it.
They've just hit a little?
It's still, it's still ongoing.
But it's still ongoing, yes.
But we'll just have to re-approve it down the road.
Yeah, you'll, I imagine you'll see that.
Anybody have any other questions on any of these projects that you can see? Be quite a boon to our building permits if we could, if we get a lot of these undergoing, that's for sure. Have you ever heard any back from the, Fertie Santa Fe Two, or whatever they're calling it now, I don't know, eighty-nine and Vine, or whatever?
I have not heard anything for a month or two now. There was a new investment company that had come in to speak with staff. I haven't?
So they've got a new group working on it, so?
I haven't heard or seen anything in the last couple of months, I don't know. Do you have any other updates from that?
City Manager, yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman Ron Corbin, City Manager, yes. They've been working with our team on water and wastewater, and considering different options, so they're actively involved in trying to move the project forward. So we're looking forward to it, it is still in motion, but yeah, we're working through wastewater and water plants.
Okay, good. Probably a little different concept, they've got new investors, I don't know. Might not be, we had had meetings on their concept with the city council a couple of years ago, I'm sure that's always changing.
Mr. Chairman, just like you've seen on a lot of your projects, when you see them for the third time, the third version is a little different, but it's not substantively, however you say the word, different. It is still a mixed use, with some high-density and then some lower-density, and with some retail along eighty-nine A. I think they're going to start closer to eighty-nine A to create a feel for their new development. It's very nice and well-thought-out, very excited about the new partners that they have moving the project forward, so you'll see something eventually, very excited about it.
Okay. Anything on, while we got you there? There's been a lot of talk, and anything materializing going on, affordable housing other than just the apartment projects, is there anything?
So we are working on workforce housing, so we've partnered with some of the other municipalities in the area, including Sedona and Camverde and Clarkdale. We've also reached out to Yavapai College, NACOG, and I'm forgetting one other organization we met with, to, we put a little committee together. Justin, the city manager from Sedona, has been working on it as our lead. Sedona has put out for a RFP to do, hire a consultant to come in and do a study, to look at our current inventory, future needs, and give us ideas on how to proceed. In the meantime, our staff is working hard on any higher-density projects, to see what we can do to speed those along. Inspiration is moving along. When we get requests for those kinds of things, we try to expedite it to see what we can do to help.
Okay, good, very good. Any other questions, the City Manager, will we?
Yeah, the apartments across from the hospital?
That's Inspiration.
The name of that?
Inspiration, it's the first item, or not the first, but it's Inspiration at Cottonwood, mid-page one, on page one, right in the middle, sort of a bigger space.
The other one I was wondering about was Immaculate Conception, how far along is that?
Inspiration is having ADOT issues to access their site.
Still?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Norwood, so Inspiration points, they're moving along, hopefully ADOT will be the last little piece, but they're still working on that. The church out there, they are also working through issues with water and other kinds of things.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
The, see, anybody's been watching, the Vineyards project is being pretty successful. They're putting in about a house a month on their lots.
It's starting to take off now, hasn't it?
And so, it, you know, it started, and it seems to be growing, and it looks like it's going to be a success.
Yeah, it seemed like they were a little slow at start, but that happens, but nobody wants to be the first person to live in the subdivision, I guess, or the second one, with all the construction, but it sounds, it looks like, yeah, I've been very encouraged driving by that, that it's picked up steam, and they had some, in their plans, some patio homes, things like that, might be a little more affordable, which would be good, and going down the road.
Yeah, they would have condos.
Condos, yeah. Yeah, things like that, mix it up a little bit, yeah. That would, does eighty-nine and Vine have any, I remember their original concept was all pretty high-end residential, with some apartments on the front, eventually, but?
Mr. Chair, yes. I don't remember the price point, but the price point was very, well, comparatively speaking, very affordable, which included high-density, not townhomes, a special kind of housing, I can't think of the word for it, no.
Patio, I know what you're saying.
Anyways, a higher-density?
Okay.
Townhome?
Good, okay, so they've, they've been more flexible, that's good.
They have, the preliminary design for the first build out looked pretty nice. Of course, it's not ready for your guys' eyes yet, I'm sure it'll undergo several changes, but yeah, they, their first set will be high-density, they won't build the low-density till later in the project.
Oh, okay, good. That's good to hear, because that was just sort of reversed, I remember, before, they were, that was down the road.
Never know for sure, Mr. Chair, but they really want to develop along eighty-nine A with some retail.
Okay, go ahead and get that done.
The high-density there to really build an impact of what their community is going to look like, including some vineyards there, of course, along eighty-nine A. So I think that they want to get it up and running and kind of show what it's supposed to look like.
Yeah, put those services in right up front, that's good.
I think one section of their housing, they describe as bungalows.
Bungalows, that was the word.
Bungalows, all right, good, all right.
Because they originally proposed, proposed about six hundred apartment units behind the commercial on eighty-nine A, if I remember correctly. And then there was another twenty-five hundred homes over.
Two thousand, yeah. But they were going to, the original concept, they were, they were really going to start just with housing, and that, those were future plans, so it's good, this is, to me, it makes a little more sense, they do that and go forward, and I'm, that's fine, thank you, sir. And Mr. Tarbell's project, I know, is succeeding immensely, and his housing project, he keeps growing up out the hill there, so that's good. Anything else, Scott?
No, sir.
All right, we'll pass along the word to Baron. We? All right, if you'll pass along the word to Baron, we appreciate her services and sorry to see her go. Well, onward and upward. Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I second. Motion carried.[1766.51]